Okay, the magical hour is here. Mr. Hammack, are you on there? Can you hear us?
I can and I am here.
Wow, see that? Is it true that you're sitting on a beach somewhere? No?
Uh, close to one, close to one.
Okay, we have Congressman, Congressman.
Congratulations, Councilman.
Councilman Hammack on the line. He's on vacation and Councilman Kaz won't be here this evening. The rest of us are here, so I'd like to welcome you to the April 15th, 2019 regular city council meeting. Do you all know what day the 15th, what that means is? Any idea? What?
It's Tax Day.
It is?
Yes. Do you need to go?
I need to leave. Okay. And also, since I'm gonna be here for the next four hours, so are you. No, I'm just kidding. Alright, everybody ready? Would you call roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Hammack?
Here.
Councilmember Haquez, absent. Councilmember Meisner?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Here.
Mayor Troutman?
Here.
Okay, let's start with the invocation. Could we have Assistant Councilmaster Klebke and bring your scouts up here, because the Boy Scouts are gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Assistant Councilmaster Klebke will lead us in the invocation. Would you rise, please?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for all your many and various blessings. Your mercies are new every morning. We especially thank you for our city, for its leaders, and all those who work to guard and protect us. We ask, O Lord, that you would be with us this evening, that you would grant us your guidance and wisdom, so that everything we say and do would be pleasing to you, and that we may lead quiet and peaceful lives to the glory of your holy name. All of this we ask in Jesus' name, our Savior and Lord. Amen.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Scout salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have usually the first few minutes of our council meeting, if you'd like to address council for something that's not on the agenda, we'd ask you to come forward and give us your name and tell us what you're thinking or not thinking, so. Nobody's rushing to the mic. Okay, well, let us move on. If any council announced, what? What? My form. What am I doing? Oh. I'm sorry, this is not on the agenda then, right? Okay. Buffy Cohen? Is Buffy here? Hi Buffy.
Hi.
I'm sorry, I thought maybe this was, usually this is something that, this is very formal, by the way, thank you, for, you have to talk about the McKinley concert. Go ahead.
This'll be real quick. McKinley is trying to take a new approach on fundraising, and so last year we attempted to do it, and we did a small concert, and this year we invited the same band back to play again. This year we're doing it at our school, McKinley, and it's the 26th of April. It's gonna be a fantastic family night.
Can you speak into the mic? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
There's gonna be bounce houses, there's gonna be the Fired Up Wood Pizza fire truck, there's gonna be another concession truck. The first 200 tickets we sell will get a free meal that's being sponsored by PCC, and we just really wanna involve the community, because it's gonna be a great family event. It's affordable, it's $8 ahead of time, whether you get it from McKinley, if you know McKinley students, or you can also get them on Eventbrite, as well as at the gate, they'll be $10. And it's, we're looking forward to it and hoping this year we get a bigger crowd than last year, so we can avoid selling seeds and candles and all those other fun things.
Great. What's the time and give us a date again?
The time, the gates will open at 5:00, and we estimate that the band, the headlining band will start approximately 6 o'clock.
And it's at McKinley School?
Yes. It'll be out on the lawn, outside.
And that's on McKinley Street?
Yes, 1240 McKinley.
Trying to keep it simple.
Yeah.
Alright, good.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, any comments from council? Ms. Turner?
Well, I hope everyone has seen in the paper, Councilwoman Gonzalez and I attended the DCI Conference last week. DCI is Downtown Colorado Inc., so they're an organization that helps support downtown development across Colorado, and they awarded our Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival the Governor's Award for Best Event, so we were very excited that we could be there and watch them see, get that award.
Great, congratulations, and did you two have a good time? I know it was hard work, but someone had to do it, right?
Well, you know, it was really cold and snowy, so we did have to trudge through the snow quite a bit. I didn't take appropriate shoes, so my ankles were cold, but I did come back with some great ideas. Kaitlyn did too. Let me just share some of my thoughts with you, if I can find my notes.
They're right behind your bar tab.
(laughing).
Or in the back of your bar tab.
Um, one thing that Aspen, it was held in Aspen, and so one thing that they did that I thought was really kind of unique was they made videos on how to Aspen, how to carry your skis, how to walk the streets, how to park, how to hike on their trails, and so I'm gonna be bringing all this stuff to Tony. Branding, downtown hours, having a business alliance outside of downtown, and just, I have a whole list. It would take me half an hour to read all these, but it was a really informative and eye-opening experience, and I'm glad, I'm glad we were able to go.
Good, thank you. Thank you too.
Yeah, I would say for those who haven't attended before, I really got a lot out of it. It was a very energized group of people there who had a lot of great ideas, so I would recommend it.
And congratulations to the Blossom Festival Group, is it called, or Association?
Yeah, they're right up there. They're the Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival.
They're right up there?
Yes. Yeah, they're here with us today.
Oh, they are?
They are, yes.
Kind of applause for them.
It just shows how, how much time and effort that our volunteers for Music and Blossom Festival have put into this event, year after year, hours and hours. I've seen Cassie where she has been tired and just worn out, and she's still out there pounding the pavement trying to get this festival moving, so it was really a nice recognition for our community and for the leaders involved in it.
Great, congratulations again. Thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Smith?
Just to piggyback, I was, when I was talking to Councilmember Turner, that, Tony, I would love an opportunity, maybe when we are meeting with the Downtown Alliance that's coming up, I would like to give time to Councilmember Dolly and Turner where they can share some of the insights and things that they learned. I would love to glean some of that information, so we can, you know, work together to put some of that to use.
I would love to share it with a lot of people, because that could probably branch off into more ideas, so.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I'm sad I couldn't go, but I would love to get the highlights from both of you. And I'd also just like to really extend a warm welcome to everybody that's filled into our audience today. I know we have a lot of exciting things happening in our community or that have happened, and we're filled with the finest of the finest of our community in here today, and I really appreciate you being here, and I'm excited to pay honor to many of these folks here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Meisner?
I'd just like everybody to notice all the new equipment up here, so if you're home watching TV in the future, hopefully you'll actually be able to see us and hear us better, so.
It does have some downsides, though, being able to see us.
We won't go there.
Yeah, we've got the new Panasonic for a big screen that's there, and all the cameras, these right here, so.
Are these built in with the technology to take off 10 pounds? Instead of putting on 10 pounds?
Depends on where you're sitting, which camera.
I think you're out of order on that, because you're looking at me, aren't you?
I'm asking you, yes.
No, no. Good heavens. You see what I have to put up with?
Yeah.
I wanna raise a pay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll take a raise too, if you're offering.
Yes, okay. I've totally lost my train of thought. Oh, we have Vision Committee meeting Wednesday at 4:00. We're gonna be talking about building plans and building things, so if you have time, come on out. We're gonna have contractors here, hopefully, to talk with us. Anyone else? Okay, I'd like to recognize then the 2019 Music and Blossom Festival court. Would you come forward, please? Invite, we have Queen Madison Martinez, First Attendant Peyton Valentine, Second Attendant Emma Enslo, and Miss Personality Jacine Valdez. Did I say it right?
It's Jacine.
Jacine?
Yes. Jacine. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of council. For those of you in the audience and up here that don't know me, I'm Cassie Groh. I'm the President of the Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival Corporation. We're here tonight to extend our most sincere thanks on behalf of the Blossom Committee to you, members of council, the department heads of the city staff, for all the ongoing support and cooperation each and every one of you provide to our community festival every single year. Without you guys, we could not do what we do to give back to this community, because inside our community, the sun rises and sets on the accomplishments and achievements of each individual and each business in our town, making our community very special. 2019 was a super exciting year, and this year's festival theme is a blossoming community. It honors our community and recognizes the many achievements that have happened between 2018 and now and continuing forward. It also recognizes the achievement of being, becoming a top-six town out of the 12,000 nominations nationwide during the Small Business Revolution. City staff played a major part in getting Canyon City recognized for that competition, and it was an awesome experience for our entire community. After the Small Business Revolution crew left Canyon City, the Festival Committee learned that Canyon City Councilwoman Kaitlyn Turner, with the help of a few city staff, had nominated our beloved Blossom Festival for the Downtown Colorado Incorporated Governor's Award for Downtown Excellence in the area of Best Festival. The award is designed to recognize outstanding projects and people in Colorado that demonstrate creativity in the face of challenges, unlikely and enduring partnerships, and the dedication that the community festival has to their community. It was such an honor to accept the award on behalf of the festival last Thursday in Aspen, and the award, like Dolly said, it's an affirmation of the hard work the Festival Committee does year-round to make Blossom a success. So, thank you all from the bottom of our hearts for supporting our festival for more than 81 years and helping make this time-honored tradition a success. We also wanted to take the time to introduce this year's Blossom Festival Queen, her court, and allow these young women to talk about the Blossom Festival lineup this year, and then we'd love to get a group picture, and we did bring the Governor's Award.
Great.
Good evening, my name is Jacine Valdez. I am the 2019 Miss Personality. This year, the Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival is celebrating its 81st anniversary. This festival has consistently been the longest-running and best event in our city's history. Rain or shine, the festival is always held during the first full weekend of May. This year's Blossom festivities kick off on Wednesday, May 1st, when the Rides Amusements Giant Carnival opens on Elm Avenue between South 9th and Oak Creek Grade Road. Wednesday, May 1st is also Can Food Night at the Carnival. Bring two cans of food and receive $5 off your wristband. All cans of food will be donated to our local loaves and fishes. Thursday, May 2nd, the carnival is open from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and then it's also Family Night. Carnival goers can purchase four wristbands for $60 with their coupon. People must bring the coupon to get the discount, and the coupon can be printed from the Blossom's website, the Facebook page, and can be cut out of the shopper and the Daily Record. Also, because there is no school on Friday, May 3rd, in honor of Blossom Days, the carnival opens at noon and closes at midnight. Saturday's carnival hours are from 10:00 AM until midnight, and Sunday from 11:00 AM until 10:00 PM.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Emma Enslo, and I'm the 2019 Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival's Second Attendant. At its heart, the Blossom Festival is a high school band competition. The Blossom Festival provides nationally-recognized elementary, junior high, and high school bands the opportunity to compete at their highest levels. While the competition is funded through the Blossom Committee, it is the Canyon City and Florence High School students who put on the work of running the competition. Dozens of students volunteered to coordinate the multi-day competition, which is held both at Canyon City High School and Florence High School, beginning Wednesday, May 1st through Saturday, May 4th. A full schedule can be found on our website at CCblossomfestival.com. For the second year, the Blossom Festival Committee has added a choir competition which will be held on Friday, May 3rd at Harrison School. Admission to the competitions are free and open to everyone. We encourage everyone to go and listen to all the talented students. Next on the Blossom Agenda is the U.S. Forest Service Bird Walk in honor of World-Migratory Bird Day. We will meet at the Arkansas River Trailhead Parking Area just east of Cell Avenue off 9th Street on Friday, May 3rd at 8:00 AM. This is also a free event, open to anyone interested in birds and their conservation. We encourage everyone to bring binoculars and outdoor clothing suitable for the weather. The 15th Annual Run Blossom Races, organized and hosted by Fremont Adventure Recreation, FAR, kick off on Saturday morning, May 4th at Centennial Park. The Half Marathon begins at 7:30 AM, and the 5K Race begins at 8:30 AM. The races take place along the beautiful Canyon City Arkansas River Walk. Run Blossom is also a qualifying race for the Boulder Boulder Run held in Boulder, Colorado, on Memorial Day, and is a wonderful way to begin your Blossom Saturday. People can register online now by visiting runblossom.org. In-person registrations will occur on race day at Centennial Park from 6:45 AM to 8:15 AM. On Saturday morning, Blossoms in the Park opens at 9:00 AM. Blossoms in the Park is our awesome craft fair and kids' zone at Veterans Park filled with fun, live entertainment, and great food. More than 100 vendors from across Colorado and many neighboring states will be selling creative gifts, custom jewelry, gourmet foods, and more. The kids' zone areas are lots of fun with tumble bubbles and vendors with merchandise geared more for children. A full lineup of free entertainment is provided all day, Saturday and Sunday, on the Veterans Park stage. Blossoms in the Park entertainment will begin on Saturday, May 4th at 9:00 AM until 7:00 PM, and Sunday, May 5th, from 10:00 AM until 4:00 PM. A full schedule of the entertainment can be found at CCblossomfestival.com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Maddie Martinez, and I'm the 2019 Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival Queen. Each year, the Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival Committee selects an individual from our area who has made a significant contributions to our community. We are honored to have Mr. Ryan Stevens, Canyon City Economic Developer, serve as this year's Grand Marshal for the festival, and lead us down Main Street during the 81st Annual Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival Parade. The parade will begin at 1:00 PM on Saturday, May 4th, along Main Street and beautiful downtown Canyon City. The final parade lineup will be posted on Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival website and Facebook page by Sunday, April 28th. It will also be published in the Canyon City Shopper and Daily Record during Blossom Week. We have more than 20 bands scheduled to march in the parade this year, and of course, many floats, including the 2019 Blossom Royalty Float. Finally, the Canyon City Festival's Cluster Duck will be held on Saturday, May 4th in Macon Plaza. Cluster Duck offers a mix of live popular music from the 1980s, 90s, and now. Unlike years in the past, Cluster Duck gates open at noon this year, with a DJ playing popular music until the live bands take the stage, beginning at 5:00 PM with the band Letigo, followed by Mystic Seven headlining the show. Cluster Duck is a high-energy show that promises to be fun for the whole family. Again, Cluster Duck gates open at noon, and the cover charge is only $5. Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, thank you all for letting us come tonight and talk about the festival, and all of that information, like the girl said, can be found on our website, CCblossomfestival.com, our Facebook page, and you can always watch for us in the Daily Record and the Shopper over the next 15 days and 15 hours. But, so thank you again, from the very bottom of our hearts, for being so supportive of our festival and this community, and if we could get a picture with all of you and the ladies and the Governor's Award, that'd be awesome.
Thank you.
(applause).
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Well, at least I've been here for over half of those, 81 years.
Okay.
I started when I was five years old.
Right.
No, you don't.
Got it.
Ha, ha, ha. Okay. Well, that's great. That's exciting. What an exciting time for Canyon City and has been for months now. We need to keep that going. Wow. Okay. I'd like to recognize the excellence of the Canyon City Police Department, Canyon City Fire Department, the Fremont County Sheriff's Office, and the Fremont County Combined Regional Communication Authority. I think I'd like to call the Chief Harvey, I don't think I will, call Chief Harvey, Chief David Delvecchio, County Sheriff Alan Cooper, is Alan here, and Fremont County Combined Regional Communications Authority, Tina, Trina Everhart. What if you come front? If I ask all these wonderful ladies and gentlemen, we would have no room left, and so, would you please come forward? And then I would like to read, it's rather lengthy, but I think it's necessary that we read, that I read, if I can stumble through this, the information, recognize the excellence that occurred, and occurred in our city. Life-saving, on January 26th, 2019, Officer LeBore was first on scene of an attempted suicide by hanging. The victim had already been cut down by family and was lying on the floor face-down. Officer LeBore could hear the male was having difficulty breathing. He could see part of the ratchet strap hanging from the garage door track. He rolled the male over, and he was conducting a sternum rib, he was conducting a sternum rib. He noticed the ratchet strap was still tightly locked around the male's neck, constricting his breathing. Officer LeBore was able to quickly recognize this and cut the strap from the victim, allowing him to breathe. The male survived his attempted suicide in his back of work. On a warrant attempt on March 29th, 2019, at approximately 7:20 AM, the day shift, Lead Sergeant Ed Pendleton attempted to serve an arrest warrant for robbery, menacing assault, false imprisonment, and numerous other charges. When officers knocked on the door, a light in the trailer came on, then went off. No one would answer the door. After gathering additional information, leading the officers to believe the suspect was in the residence, they set a perimeter and called for additional support. After approximately two hours of attempting negotiations by Officer Robin Vidmar, the incident commander determined we had exhausted every reasonable effort to end this situation peacefully. Several officers made a forced entry into the residence and arrested the subject without any violent resistance or injuries to the suspect or officers involved. The officers involved at the East Main Incident were Sergeant Ed Pendleton, Sergeant Steve Husky, Sergeant Tim Bell, Sergeant Tim Walsh, Officer Shad Gary, Officer Justin Inman, Officer Nick Maul, Officer Ryan Belding, Officer Robin Vidmar, Officer William Ombry, OMB, Community Service Officer Kelly Duncan, and Morgan Recmore. Thefts, Detective Tim Smelser is currently assigned to the Investigations Division as the property crime investigator. He was assigned several vehicle break-ins, thefts, and burglaries. He conducted numerous interviews and developed a subject. Once the subject was named, he conducted interview after interview of witnesses and the subject. He was able to obtain confessions and collaborating information, evidence, to tie the subject to three burglaries, two vehicle trespass, and link the subject to over 40 additional cases. In order to complete this, Detective Smelser was sacrificed several days off to contact witnesses, serve search warrants, and track down leads. The subject was currently on bond from previous charges while he continued to commit these crimes. Detective Smelser secured enough evidence to allow the district attorney to hold the subject in jail pending his investigation. Without his hard work, the subject would have been released early, likely continuing his crime spree. It's a drug bust. On March 31st, 2019, Officer OMB was requested by the Colorado Department of Corrections to assist territorial correctional and State of Colorado to assist staff with open-air sniffs of vehicles coming into the facility for visitation of offenders. While Officer OMB and Keller were preparing to perform the open-air sniff, they observed a red Ford Ranger bearing North Dakota license plates pull into the parking lot, then turn around, exit the parking lot, and proceed west on US 50. Officers continued with the open-air sniff of the vehicles driven into Department of Correction grounds. A short time later, Officer Keller observed the female who was observed driving the Ford Ranger, walking back into the facility grounds from the east. Officer Keller had a brief conversation with the female before she entered the facility for her visit. The officers then radioed other officers to attempt to locate the Ford Ranger. Once located, officers observed a large crack directly in the center of the windshield. Due to officers observing the vehicle on a public roadway while having the cracked windshield, the officers chose to contact the female party when she returned to the vehicle. K-9 Duke and Officer OMB conducted an open-air sniff of the vehicle. K-9 Duke gave Officer OMB a positive alert for presence of illegal drugs in the vehicle. After the K-9 alert, the officers conducted a physical search of the vehicle and found 10.7 grams of black tar heroin, 5 grams of packaged, 5 grams packaging condoms ready to be introduced into the correctional facility. Without the hard work of these officers, these drugs likely would have made their way into the correctional facilities. Fire, excuse me, in the early morning hours of March 8th, 2019, Sergeant Tracy Swerengen...
It was April 8.
April. You're right. Thank you. In the early morning hours of April 8, 2019, Sergeant Tracy Swerengen was on routine patrol in the area of Fourth and Royal Gorge Boulevard. When he noticed the strong odor of smoke and followed the smoke, the visible smoke until he found the source. Sergeant Swerengen found a building located in the 200 block of Royal Gorge Boulevard fully engulfed in flames. He radioed the Fremont County Combined Regional Communications Authority to dispatch the Canyon City Fire Department. Thinking the fire involved the Parkview Hotel, Sergeant Swerengen pulled into the parking lot of the hotel and immediately turned his siren on to wake up occupants. He was quickly joined by the rest of his shift. They all began evacuating efforts of the hotel. Fremont County Deputies Alejandro Jimenez, Jeremy Miller, and Daniel Calhoun arrived on scene to assist. Sergeant Swerengen assisted them to stop all traffic on Second and Third Street as well as on Highway 50. The Canyon City Fire Department Assistant Chief Scott Johnson, Battalion Chief Joel Foster, Lieutenant Greg Van Riper, Lieutenant Stephen Cloninger, Lieutenant David DJ, Yeoman, firefighters Michael Vernetti, Joshua Johnson, Joshua Price, Michael Freer, Logan Hillburn, and volunteers Chris Vodovic, Tim Sloganhop, Bob Linham, Sean Rowe, Colton Palmer, Michael Kroll, Thomas Bright, Travis Herrera, Michael Ketchmer, Michael Lennox, and Will McCassler, McAllister, and fire investigators Lieutenant Doug McAndries and Lieutenant Shane Rowe responded and quickly assessed the situation, developing a plan to fight the fire. The Fire Department quickly and decisively firefighting plan saved the Parkview Hotel and several businesses located in the 200 block of Main Street which began to burn. With the combined efforts of the Canyon City Police Department, the Canyon City Fire Department, Fremont County Sheriff's Office, and the dispatchers, Rachel Goldman, Jody Ramalde, Remillard, and Andrew Sandville from Fremont County Combined Regional Communications Authority, Canyon City may have lost lives and several businesses located in the 200 blocks of both Main Street and Royal Gorge Boulevard. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your excellence, for your professionalism, and for keeping us all safe. Thank you so very much. I'd like to then read the names and as we, I read them, if you could come forward if you're here, and we have a letter of thank you for you. Okay?
Can we take a big standing ovation?
Let's do that. Again, thank you. So I will read the names. Okay. Let's start with the Canyon City Police Department, Sergeant Tim Bell, Sergeant Steve Husky, Sergeant Ed Pendleton, Sergeant Tracy Swerengen, Sergeant Tim Walsh, Detective Tim Smelzer, Officer Ryan Belding, Officer Chad Gary. Am I going too fast?
Well, and I'd like to invite him to come up here for a picture, too, after you get your award.
Oh, yeah. You're not getting away without a picture. That's, sorry. We actually feel very safe here. Okay. Officer Chad Gary, Officer Justin Inman, Officer John Keller, Officer Zachary LeBour, Littaber, Officer Nick Maul, Officer William Omby, Officer Robin Vidmar, CSO Kelly Duncan, and Morgan Ruckmore. Okay. I'd like to read the names of the people. What? Let's get them all up here. Would you rather have separate pictures with separate groups? Let's get them all up here. Okay. And Duke? Don't be sniffing up here, Duke. Okay. Just kidding. All right. Fremont County Sheriff's Office, Sergeant Brandon Tilly, Deputy Daniel Calhoun, Deputy Alejandro Jimenez, Deputy Steve Jones, Deputy Jeremy Miller. Canyon City Fire Department, Assistant Chief Scott Johnson, Battalion Chief Joel Foster, Lieutenant Steve Cloninger, Lieutenant Doug McAndries, Lieutenant Shane Rowe, Lieutenant Greg Van Riper, Lieutenant Donald Yeoman, firefighter Michael Freer, firefighter Logan Hillburn, firefighter Joshua Johnson, firefighter Joshua Price, firefighter Michael Vernetti, volunteer firefighter Thomas Bright. Oh, your whole family's here, huh? Volunteer firefighter Thomas Herrera, volunteer firefighter Michael Ketchmer, Ketchmire, sorry, volunteer firefighter Michael Kroll, volunteer firefighter Michael Lennox, volunteer firefighter Bob Linham, volunteer firefighter Will McAllister, volunteer firefighter Colton Palmer, volunteer firefighter Sean Rowe, volunteer firefighter Tim Sloganhop, volunteer firefighter Chris Vodovic. It's funny, I've known some of these young men since they're little boys. Wow. Okay. Fremont County Combined Regional Communications Authority, dispatcher Rachel Goldman, dispatcher Michael Graves, dispatcher Jody Remillard, and dispatcher Andrew Sandville. Have I missed anyone before my voice goes out?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Chief Harvey.
So there is two folks in the audience, Ms. Angie Clausen from the Combined Regional Communications Authority, and Ms. Valerie Lane. Both of them were part of a couple of these incidents. Ms. Valerie Lane, and I'm sorry she didn't make it into the memo, is our crime analyst and is one of the folks who was integral in helping identify this trend of burglaries that we were able to solve. And between the cooperation of Detective Tim Smelzer and crime analyst Valerie Lane, she was an important part. So even though I apologize and I'll accept the fault for that, we don't have a certificate for her, I'd like for her to come up and be recognized as well.
Please.
So, yeah, I think we might need to have you guys gather in a little bit. We'll get a huge group picture.
Everybody inhale.
All right, we're gonna do this. One, two, three, cheese. Everybody. All right, I think that's it, guys.
Thank you. Wow.
Not because he smells perfect.
All right, just wow.
Good job. No, 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 no.
They all have guns, Mr. Mayor. I'd kick 'em out.
What? Wait a minute. My best jokes are waiting. I'm just, I don't know control.
Trick someone to run towards her.
He didn't come up here. Chief Harvey.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I appreciate the recognition for my staff and the great job that they're doing. We actually have one more person that I'd like to recognize tonight, and unfortunately, she has decided to move on to greener pastures. But her experience and her dedication to the city, I think, is worthy of recognition tonight as well. And so unfortunately, I think the majority of folks have gone outside. But Detective Robin Vidmar, I'd like to call her up to the podium.
Okay.
Just to give you a brief, yeah. To give you a brief background, and I'm sure there's a lot more that she's done that I will be remiss and not remember, but the things that I remember about Robin most is her being kind of the mother hen of the department. A lot of folks really went to her, and she organized things and got people together. You know, she was a detective and a crisis negotiator. There was a lot of things that she did that had titles. But what really meant something to me about Robin was that it wasn't her titles or what we called her by, it was what she did inside the department. And I will definitely miss her. She's been with us for 12 years, and I wish her the best in her future endeavors. And if she ever changes her mind, we'd welcome her back with open arms, so.
This is a shadow box that Commander Robert Gill crafted for her. It has every badge that she's ever worn. And I'd like to present this on behalf of her, thanking her for our tradition.
Thank you, Robin. Thank you very much. The hard-working professionalism of our Police Department, Fire Department, and communications people is wonderful. It always scores the highest numbers in our survey from our people, how safe they feel, and that's the really wonderful thing about our community. These ladies and gentlemen work incredible hours. They train a lot, and they take very good care of us, and we appreciate it. So, thank you all.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Meisner.
Just keep in mind that the drug bust is part of the, was a result of the most recent improved relationship or enhanced relationship between the city of Canyon City and the correctional facilities that exist within our community. So that was kind of the end result of that whole process beginning. You'll see a lot more of those types of activities. Thanks.
That's true. That's where it came from. Ms. Smith?
I also just wanted to extend my heartfelt thanks to the CCPD. I would also like to extend it to the other folks who are here tonight as well. But my feelings are pretty tender today as I've been reflecting on the honors and awards that you're receiving tonight, just reflecting on the many ways that you protect our community. And my feelings are particularly, my empathy is particularly strong tonight as we extend these honors to you, because my own son was put into danger, a dangerous situation, and his perpetrator was sentenced to jail this morning. And I thank you. I thank you very personally for protecting our community.
Thank you. Okay. I've lost my way. So. All right. Let's see. Item C. Oh, Arbor Day. Yes, we're going to have, Canyon City will hold again its Arbor Day. I think this is the 30th year or so, 31 years for Arbor Day. That will be celebrated April 26 at 11:00 a.m. at Centennial Park. And usually they hook the mayor into digging a hole for a tree or two. And since I have a degree in forestry, the State Forest Ranger and I get to talk about trees, one of my favorite items. And so, that's always a fun time. Okay. And on the, I do have a proclamation. I'll read a proclamation for that day at that celebration. And then on April 22 is Earth Day. I have a proclamation for that as well. And I'll read that at that time. We do have, I do have a proclamation, the, is Trina Everhart still here? Okay. I'd like to go ahead then and read a proclamation that I signed on the Colorado Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Whereas dedicated public safety communications officer serves the citizens of Colorado by answering their requests for law enforcement, fire, or emergency medical service. And whereas the public safety communication officer is the first link between the citizen and the emergency responder. And whereas the safety of both citizens and emergency responders is dependent upon the highly trained and skilled public safety communication officer. And whereas the role public safety communication officers play in ensuring public safety occurs between the scenes and is seldom recognized. And whereas public safety communication officers serve the city of Canyon City, serving the city of Canyon City, have exhibited professionalism, efficiency, and compassion during the performance of their essential duties in the past year. And whereas the Association of Public Communication Officials has designated the second week in April to recognize public safety telecommunications. I, Preston Troutman, Mayor of Canyon City, hereby proclaim April 14 through the 20, 2019 as Colorado Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the city of Canyon City, Colorado. And thank all of them. Again, that's a group of people that are behind the scenes and take care of us, tremendous effort and compassion. So we thank you for that. All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda. And I would ask the county, the city administrator, I'm promoting everybody tonight, ask the city administrator to review the consent agenda items.
Mayor and council, 8A would be approval of the special city council meeting of March 26, 2019, and the regular city council meeting of February the 4th. 8B would be approval of the Boston Festival request for the use of city property and street closure related to the May 4th Main Street Parade, the May 4th and 5th Veterans Park events, the Cluster Duck event at Macon Plaza on May the 4th, concession sales for all two days, judging stand on Main Street, the 5K walk and half marathon, and the carnival on city property. In addition, we want to highlight there has been good communication and coordination regarding parking between the train and the festivals. We believe it will be very smooth this year. 8C would be approval of monthly budgets. We've traditionally just provided you these privately, but for the record to provide you those for the, takes you up to the end of February, and we'll provide them to you generally the second meeting of every month. But we're on task for revenues are right now trending below the norm, but that's typical for this time of the year because we see a spike in sales tax activity starting with the warmer weather through the summer and the fall. And expenditures are well in line. Also, 8D would authorize the mayor to sign a water service agreement contract, William and Stormy Weston at 31, excuse me, 317 and 339 Storm Ridge. That's actually an area technically in the county adjacent to Storm Ridge Road. It's a, I think it's 140-acre lot that they have their parcel. 8E would, would we receive and review of our list of bills. And we added, because Rex was in Mexico right up until Friday, awarding bid number 2119 for a new Toro 700 series professional turf mower to Craig's Power Equipment of Colorado Springs in amount not to exceed $14,289.97. Have any questions about any of those items?
Mr. Meisner.
Regards to the budget summary on the Public Works Division.
Yes.
There's one item that's at 62%, and one item that's at 90%. Does that just mean that they've already made their major expenditures for the year?
Yeah, most likely in a particular line item. Yeah. Could have been, for example, mag chloride would reflect that, or sanding.
Some of those big bids that we just did?
Yeah, which are seasonal.
What's the $5,400 billboard expense?
We started advertising, I think it was a little over a year ago. There's a, if you've probably seen it coming out of the Royal Gorge Park, there's a major billboard There's a, if you've probably seen it coming out of the Royal Gorge Park, there's a major billboard promoting downtown. And it was a three-year agreement to get that position. But see a lot of positive comments on that to hopefully encourage people, instead of taking a left, which they traditionally do to go to Slida, to take a right and enjoy our Main Street.
I think you told me the same thing last year.
Yes, try to be consistent.
Yes, Mr. Meisner?
I'm digressing slightly. But in our consent agenda at the last meeting, we approved the award for some body cameras. And I, at that time, had questioned whether that process included an RFP process or bid process. Because the format of the information wasn't quite what I was used to with the information that typically Adam sends us or Bob sends us in terms of a nice clean format that lays everything out in terms of what, what happened. Aside from that, I would, I would ask administration that in the future, all of those large bids follow that format that shows that we, in fact, submitted X amount of requests for bids or RFPs, whatever was done, and then the layout in that similar format that we've, that at least those two departments have historically used. So that it's really clear that we followed protocol and policy relative to presenting that information to council.
We would concur with you. And what Councilmember Meisner is speaking to is that we have traditionally required sealed written bids for capital items. In this case, they were written bids, but they were not sealed. And we, we accept your recognition of that. We will make sure that we are consistent on that in the future. Regardless of what department it is, the process should be clean and implemented across the board. So, thank you.
Are you referring to the lawnmower, the riding mower that was purchased?
No, last, at the last meeting, we approved a body camera, and I want to revisit the issue.
No, you don't have to.
We'll reinforce that information.
When that's presented to council, it needs to be in a little more straightforward, distinctive, clear process that procedure was followed. And I'm not suggesting it wasn't. I'm just.
Well, it wasn't to the T's. I'll certainly disclose that. And that's important to us because even our bid processes are subject to annual audits. They will randomly select different bids and pull out and determine where they sealed bids, you know? Was the correct decision made? So, this is a reflection also on the Finance Department, which in this case was not involved in that process. We need to make sure that we're consistent across the board. So, we will. So, I appreciate you bringing that up.
And I don't know that we've got a specific form that's used, but, but the one I recall from Adam and
No, we do.
the Water Department kind of lays everything out in terms of who was sent out to what and who declined and who didn't.
And a member of our Finance Department coordinates that. So, there's always some separation of responsibility between the parties desiring the equipment versus those overseeing the process. So, there's a segregation of duty, and we'll make sure that that is consistently followed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Then I would entertain a motion in a second.
Do you have a question, Jim?
No.
Make your motion.
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve the consent agenda and the agenda with a modification to the consent agenda to include item, which I assume would be F, bid number 2019 for the amount of $14,289.97.
Second.
Second. Ms. Gonzalez, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
He's fell asleep.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you. Next discussion is the Public Arts Mural Program. Could I have Stormwater, well, listen to this, Stormwater Technician, Linda Becker, and Mountain View Cornell School Art Teacher Meg Olson, and give us reporting that. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I hope you all had a chance to look at the art that we have out in the hall out here on your way in. Just a real quick background, we had the art show in February. This program so far has been well received with the public. We had 134 art entries. We narrowed those down, the committee, to 68 for the art show. Opened it up for public voting, both at the art show and online. We had 343 ballots cast at the art show at the art center and 147 online ballots to choose the top 10 that we have out there. So, now we're asking council to choose one of the top 10 for the large, which will be painted on the large support at the Fourth Street Viaduct.
Any questions? Ms. Cochran?
I just want to say really quick how appreciative I am of both of your hard work getting all of this together and enrolling, and the amount of submissions that, Meg, you had a huge role in getting those submissions, but the amount of submissions that we got was just phenomenal. Hundreds that we originally got, and we kind of had to weed through and, and find our top 60? How much did we?
68, we chose, yeah.
From hundreds. And so, it's really exciting to see that the community is so excited about this project. And I just want to thank you both for your efforts.
And thank you for being on the committee with us.
Yes, thank you. We need to have more walls, maybe. There's some incredible art.
And, and as a result of this Public Arts Mural Program, the 11th piece of artwork out there from Elijah McBride was chosen by Fremont Adventure Recreation to feature on the back of their student activity guide for 2019, and that was published at the first of this month. So, his artwork is on the back of all of those.
Wow, that's great. Mr. Meisner?
Just keep in mind that, I don't know how long, I know that Meg and I was working on this three years ago?
Yeah.
Four years ago, because when I first joined council.
Okay, yeah.
And picked it up, I think, for the second round because you had worked on it previously. Is that correct?
I, yes, I was trying to get things going, and then I attended a Public Arts Council meeting, and you were there. And that was when you and I first started discussing it.
So, it's been a long process. We appreciate you sticking with it.
I appreciate it getting this far. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
And I'd like to point out too, if I read this correctly, that we're not just selecting the one, you know, to be featured on the Fourth Street Viaduct. But if I understand correctly, the other painting or artwork submissions will be put on murals throughout town. Is that correct?
We actually have six supports at the Fourth Street Viaduct with four faces each. And then the large support with the two end caps. So, all of this artwork will be incorporated into murals on all of these pillars and that. When we start the next phase next year, we will have a whole new art semitale contest.
Awesome, yeah. I'm really excited to, to see all the artwork done and hope you take lots of pictures of the kids painting and the community getting together to do that.
We're hoping to do an actual video and talk to the students and supervisors and videotape them actually painting this that we can post on our website, Channel 19. And I'd like to submit it to National Stormwater Magazine if it's, comes out a good video, so.
Awesome. Well, congratulations.
So, do we have a choice from council for the one for the large support?
What's the pleasure of council? How do you want to do this?
Hold on.
Did I ask you, Mr. Meisner, or are you just taking over here? I mean?
Caitlin tells me that this is number 68. Is that correct?
Yes.
You didn't trust me, did you, Jim?
Well, if I'm going to vote, Jim, I would have voted.
Don't take it personally.
Wouldn't be the first time I heard that. I would suggest, Mr. Mayor, maybe we just go around and everybody pick their favorite and just see where we stand. And then just keep voting on that until we wind up with a, a single.
Okay. Ms. Turner, would you like to start?
Sure. I happen to like number 68, and that's why I know the number. I love that it has the train and the bridge, and then also the tubing and the bicycling and the rafting, and then some of the columbines in the corner, and deer and hiking. I mean, this artist has really captured my favorite parts of our community. So, that's my favorite one.
Is that our state bird?
Gosh, I don't know. Possibly.
Mr. Meisner?
There's some really, really nice representations of the community here. But I, I think with the art and the representation, I'd like 68.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
Well, I'm really glad that they're all going to be represented at some point, but I'll also vote top choice 68.
Ms. Cochran?
My favorite was 12. I really liked that it features so many different aspects of, of our outdoors activities here in Colorado, and the fact that it's got the Colorado on there and the mountains and all that. I, I just really like that one.
What? Ms. Gonzalez?
I really enjoy number 2. All the wildlife. It clearly symbolizes Colorado, the Royal Gorge, the river, the state flower. Mine was number 2.
Number 2. Mr. Hammack, do you have a, a number?
Yes, number 68 looks good to me.
Okay. We have four 68s, a 12, and a 2.
Do you have a vote, Mayor?
I don't have to break any tie. My job is to break a tie.
It's not an official vote, is it?
Well, no. I like 68 too. So, I, I was, I would take all of them home. I just would. And I have no artistic talent whatsoever, but these kids blow you away. And it's, thank you. That's great. I, I like 68 too, because of some of the things that Ms. Turner has said.
So, I think that's our answer.
68? All right. So, I, with majority there, I say 68 goes on the large one. But the other ones will also be featured on some of the pillars, so.
Okay.
And we will be, we have a meeting Wednesday where we will be determining the exact dates that the painting will occur, and we'll be calling for student volunteers to paint and adults if they wish to participate. And we, at the end, we will have a big poster there listing all volunteers and artists with a "thank you" who worked on the project.
Well, thank you to you, to you both.
Real quick, today we did get our sign up, which looks great because before it was just kind of broken glass and nothing really in there. But now we have something saying what's coming down in, by the Fourth Street, in the parking lot down there. There's a little, I don't know, not really a sign, but.
A little wayfinding chaos or, or something, yeah.
So, we've got some signage up in there letting people know what's coming.
And I want to thank Dave Hankins from the City Parks Department who designed that and had it printed, volunteering that, his time to do that, so.
Awesome. Well, and thanks to Amanda too for your time in representing council.
Thanks, Amanda.
Do we keep all those then here? Do we, can we?
You, you need to talk to Meg about that.
It might be nice to blow some of those up if we can do that and hang it in City Hall and some of our walls, which look vacant. There's some, these kids are great.
Yeah, I'm sure that can be arranged, yes.
I love that idea.
Let's talk about it. I mean, I go to their city halls and everything, especially if you've been to Woodland Park. There's, they've got copies, they've got pieces of their trees and stuff, and then we had to dress it up here, so. Let's try it.
Okay, we can, we'll figure that out. We'll do that.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you, Glenn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to get in real big trouble here. I'm just going to tell you right up front. We have a young lady in the audience that, I don't know if you've all met or not, but it's Chief Harvey's wife, Alicia. See? You don't have to stand up or anything, but we, that's Mrs. Harvey sitting out there.
She exists.
She's checking on where he's at, I think, so. Well, thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to embarrass you. Okay.
Yeah, and she's sticking through the end.
She is.
At least more than anybody else did.
She's tough, I'll tell you. Watch it. All right, let's move on. Okay, let's do the Community Solar Panel Farm on Cone Avenue. A is consideration adoption by title only. Resolution number 11, Series 2019, entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of Canyon City, Colorado, Accepting the Conveyance of Property Known as Lot 6, Block 10, Park Center Subdivision, filing number 1." And would we do these together individually, or should we just, should I read both of them at one time?
You can read them both at the same time, but you need to vote separately.
Okay, let's, I'll just go ahead and read them then. In consideration of municipal code update ordinance 11, Series 2019, for introduction and first reading by title only entitled ordinance for the City of Canyon City, Colorado, vacating a portion of Cone Avenue within the City of Canyon City, Colorado. And we have Adam Lancaster to give us an update.
Thank you. Let's talk vacation, right? So, you recall that we recently rezoned this property from R2 to OPR for the solar farm. So, the next step is for the, the vacation of the right-of-way that we talked about when we did that rezoning. Their property is bisected by both South Street and Cone Avenue, and those, both those rights-of-way are undeveloped. And so, in planning the solar farm, they would prefer to place the southern portion, group all the panels together. The eastern portion of their property has a drainage way through it and an old detention pond. And so, they would like to exchange that area, which is identified as Lot 6 of the Park Center subdivision, in exchange for us vacating the right-of-way. There are no utilities within the right-of-way that we're talking about. The section that we're talking about is Cone Avenue between South Street and the south boundary of their property. And their property is the only one that, that is, currently could be accessed by this right-of-way. And so, they're the only ones that may be affected by the vacation. So, as you read, there's a resolution for the conveyance. There is also a exchange agreement that the attorney has drafted. And the Smiths are more than happy to sign as this moves forward. And then there's the ordinance, of course, vacating the right-of-way, which would take two readings. And so, we anticipate after the second reading, which would be May 6th, that, that week, the May 6th, we would accord the ordinance and the vacation map along with the exchange agreement and the new deed to the city.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Lancaster? So, are you waving your pen for some reason? Okay, I just.
Just exercising.
I don't ignore you. All right. So, let's go ahead and take a, ask for a motion on A to start. And would someone like to do that? That would be to adopt A, which you can read there. Ms. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 1119, the vacation of Cone Avenue.
No, no, it's Resolution 11.
Resolution 1119.
2019. We do that one first.
Wait, what?
A. You're not, you're A. We're going to do that one first, which is the resolution first, which we're going to adopt, and ask for a motion to, to adopt that.
Yeah, it's opposite on our memo. But I'll do the move that we adopt Resolution number 11, Series of 2019.
Okay.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any questions on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay. Then B, is it, do I have something different here?
Yeah, you do.
Ours, ours just says ordinance 1119, vacation of Cone Avenue, listed first. And then it says Resolution 1119, conveyance of Lot 6, Block 10, Park Center.
Then on our agenda, it's a little different.
Yeah. Yeah. See, I have, I have just the opposite, and of course, the mayor's one's always correct.
And it doesn't matter which one you do first. It's okay. They got flipped.
I'm just kidding, so.
So, we're just going to get this job done, and also going to move that we adopt ordinance 11, Series of 2019.
Second.
Second. Ms. Cochran, thank you. Any questions on that vote, I mean, motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
So, the only thing, we have a second reading coming up then for the, the ordinance to vacate. Everything else is done. Okay? Mr. Meisner?
Do we have to approve the, the land exchange agreement?
That's what your resolution did, I believe.
That's what the resolution was. The conveyance.
I see it now.
Okay.
I missed it.
The mayor's stuff is always correct.
Works for me.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, this is the biggie here. We're going to lose our whole audience on this one here.
Yeah, thanks, you guys, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck. How soon will that be going in?
Let's say, I mean, I got a left one now that this just moved forward, we can hear CP hand, but I would say the earliest would be late June.
Nice.
Wow.
And then the latest would be mid-August, early September.
Wow. Okay, that's exciting. Wow. Thank you, that's great, good. All right. Let's go on to number 11. Again, a large reading thing for me. Consideration municipal code update. Ordinance 12, series 2019, for introduction and first reading by title only entitled in ordinance repealing Chapter 1.18 of Title I, Administrative Enforcement. Repealing and reenacting certain chapters of Title VIII concerning nuances, nuisances, and nuisance abatement. Amending Section 9.56.015 and 9.56.030 concerning firearms. Amending Title IX by relocating Chapter 8.12, Smoking in Public Places, to a new Chapter 9.23. Relocating Chapter 8.48, Fireworks, to a new Chapter 9.58, and relocating Chapter 8.5, bless you, opening, open burning to a new Chapter 9.60. Amending Title XV by relocating Chapter 8.6, Fire Protection and EMS Impact Fee, to a new Chapter 15.42, repealing Chapter 15.32, Moving Buildings, Amending the Code by relocating and Amending Chapter 12.16, Sidewalk and Gutter Maintenance. Chapter 8.70, Stormwater, Elicit Discharges, and Permit Requirements in Chapter 8.80, Flood Plane Management Regulations, to new Titles 19, 20, and 21, and making other minor amendments to ensure conformity with the ordinance. Is that, is that the city administrator, or is that our engineer, or?
Well, I can...
Or the attorney?
I, I'll start.
We get to call Catherine, go ahead.
So you've been working on this for, well, I think staff's been working on it for about a year and a half, council's been working on it for about six months or so, eight months. So, this is the final version of the ordinance based upon all those meetings, and the mayor's read over everything that's changing, it's quite a bit. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think you probably have a generally good handle on the subject matter, so.
I'd like to go first.
If nobody's going.
Well, it's not an open invitation, Mr. Meisner. No, go ahead, Mr. Meisner.
Page eight. Maybe directed at Catherine and maybe Chief Harvey, but an item number 10 and 11, we make reference to medical marijuana, but more specifically, an item 11, 10 is medical, 11 is, makes reference to retail marijuana. And I realize what the intent there is, maybe with a retail operation, which is not authorized within the city anyways, but what about, what about if just the mayor's growing marijuana illegally?
Well, that's not retail marijuana.
Right.
I mean, if he's just growing it for himself, that's not retail marijuana.
I know, but if he's growing it for himself and it's illegal, the number of plants that he has.
Okay, well, that's a violation of a different section of the code.
Different section.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to clarify that I'm not doing anything.
I just needed a reference. I have a number of questions.
How he supplements his mayor.
Chief Harvey, you did hear the, okay, anyway. Go ahead.
Page 11. I think I've got this. I just want to clarify with council that that is in fact what we intended it to read. I'm not suggesting it's not, but we had lots of discussion over this particular section, I want to make sure that...
You're referencing E in particular, or?
Yes. And I think what we've done here is, is we, we decided that the issue was that we didn't want windows boarded up, and that's essentially what it says. Because we're not going to board up a window. We're not going to get into all those other things about...
We wanted to keep it very simple and clear-cut, and it was more consistent with the fire department's code as well.
Okay.
I also brought the original petition that was signed by downtown business owners asking that we address this issue, just in remembrance that we had, so that we would take a look at being able to attend to their request, and now we are doing it.
And I have a quick question for Catherine. On two, we didn't put a timeframe, but that, the language is still effective as far as not letting it sit vacant for like two years with boards on the windows because they had a fire at one point?
Yeah, I mean, so, it's, it's like an automatic unless you fall under these two things. And I guess the presumption is, is that you have to be actively either pursuing the assistance for demolition, rehabilitation, or restoration, or you would have a permit in place, and so it would, you would be allowed to board it through that process. We can certainly put a timeframe in there, and we talked about that timeframe.
If you think actively pursuing is effective?
I mean, I'm fine with it, it's really a policy decision.
I think my, my only other clarification is to make sure that if there are, like legitimately, like residential homes or like St. Scholastica, they really did need to have their windows boarded, that that would still be allowed. Because that, we had talked about that for abandoned buildings, the, the safety issues.
Yeah, I mean, if it had the active building permit, or it was working on like grant money to maybe restore it or something like that, yeah, I think that would apply.
Well, a lot of our building, our residential buildings aren't active on anything whatsoever.
I would say that, those exceptions would not apply, they have to actively be doing...
And so that's something the police, or the fire chief did mention, that those buildings are actually really important to have boarded up, and it's not necessarily an eyesore to our downtown, but it is an important part of our public health and safety because they are often hotbeds for crime, squatting, arson. And so originally, we did have a little something in there about residential.
We did.
And we might need to insert that back in.
If that's the direction council wants to go.
What are you going to insert?
For the residential homes that are truly abandoned, that actually really do need to be boarded windows for safety, public health and safety reasons.
Would residential be affected by this? Because this section's called Offensive Trader Business. So I don't think it applies to residential.
I know it's that section, but it doesn't actually make like a commercial distinction. Now, we can make that distinction in the alternative if you'd like, but when I read that, it applies to everything.
If, if we leave it as it is, and we boarded up one of those terrible homes, does the verbiage not allow us to pers, to at least put some pressure on to get something done?
Well, the problem is a lot of those homes, they don't, often the homeowner is in jail. They've died and they can't find who will be the new owner of the building. A lot of the, yeah, there's no, there's nothing happening on those buildings, except crime, drug use, and sometimes fires.
But if you put a timeframe in there to, to, to address some of those things, you may have to say five years, right?
Oh, no, wait, I, I'm, I think the verbiage, if the owner lets this be abandoned, windows are knocked out, I think the clause that says, establishes by substantial evidence, that's pretty evident. Whether, it doesn't necessarily mean they have to write you a letter saying, "I'm going to abandon this property." If I see a house, I think that's pretty substantial evidence that it's an abandoned house. I don't, I don't know, I think that's twisting it a little bit, but I think common sense would say, and at that point, the city administrator can offer, can have it boarded up. I, I would look at it that way, and that's what I would appeal back to the person, "Wait a minute, you've allowed this to become abandoned, it's obviously abandoned. You have by default made that comment."
So in the version before, you did have the residential building exclusion, we can add that back in, I think that addresses your issue?
I, I would, I would like to see that in there, just because we actually had to have a lot of discussion on that particular issue with the abandoned home problems.
Where would you add that?
Probably as a item three.
Okay.
That would say this section does not apply to buildings used for residential purposes, that was the language that was in there before.
Okay. Yeah, I'm okay with it, I don't want to go back with this hundred-page document again just to solve that one. Give us one page, okay?
You just want pieces of the ordinance on second?
Don't abandon the whole thing. Oops, wait a minute, all right. Okay, I had an, I had a, are we, can I ask a question now? I had a, it says here on our ordinance in the preamble there, it says, "Chapter 12.6, 16, Sidewalk and Gutter Maintenance," I don't find that...
Yeah, so that was, that was relocated into Title 19. So those three chapters at the end of the heading, I kind of grouped together because they were all moved.
All right, so the...
And then amended as well, so.
And so what you're saying then in the, this preamble sort of thing, those things are all put into 19, 20, or 21?
Exactly.
Okay.
Of Title VIII? Right?
No.
No.
They're in, well, Chapter 12.16 was in Title 12, and then 8.70 and 8.80 were both in Title VIII, and then they moved to Title 19, 20, and 21.
Okay.
Okay. The only other question, and I probably asked it before, is that if someone has a vehicle in their backyard and they cover it with some kind of covering, like you would your travel trailer or trailer, bless you, is that acceptable? There's a time limit on all that, or we not even, do we not want to go down that road?
So you, you, you are, I might, I don't have it in front of me, but my recollection is you are permitted to unsheltered, which means they're visible from the right-of-way, so not necessarily items that would be covered, or there's a fence, for 14 days, I believe, at any given time.
So what you're saying is if I had, and I see a lot of them, by the way, travel trailers that have a cover on them, that have sat there forever, that'd be okay?
Okay, let me get to that section just to make sure.
No, you're not, you just...
Okay, so unsheltered means located outside a garage or any other building in such a manner to be visible to a person standing upon the public street, alley, sidewalk, or right-of-way, or to any person standing at ground level upon the adjoining piece of property. So that's the definition of unsheltered.
So sheltered would mean it's got to be inside?
Or not seen from the public right-of-way.
Yeah. If it's behind a fence that you can't see. So I would say cover probably doesn't cut it.
But if it was behind a privacy fence?
What'd you say?
Behind a privacy fence, okay?
Uh-huh.
If it's screened from the public right-of-way.
If it, if you couldn't see it?
Yeah.
Okay.
That would mean front and back, you know, alleys and streets.
And sides.
Sides.
Okay. Any other questions? What?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Meisner?
On page 15, item E, just a clarification, and I guess I'm, we're still saying, essentially, these garage sale signs that are getting affixed to utility poles, which doesn't belong to the city anyways, you can't do that, is that correct?
Right, no sign may be put on the poles. Utility pole or any public or private dwelling, store, business.
I realize you're the attorney, but do we have the right to say that you can't put something on a utility pole that doesn't belong to us?
Yes.
Your right-of-way.
I'm coming. Page 18. We're talking about stuff that can be in the front yard. I think item number three, shouldn't that at least say lawn and patio furniture?
We can sure change it to that.
So you'd add the verb, I mean, you would add patio?
And patio.
Mm-hmm.
That's number three.
Yes, and then... Page 29, where we talk about administrative appeals. And I, I guess I just need assistance from our attorney. Even though we talk about administrative, in the past, if I recall, some of this actually went through our administrator, whereas this all goes through the court system, is that correct? But it's just, it's a...
Actually, it didn't go to the administrator, you had a setup of an administrative hearing officer, so that would have been someone else you would have had to appoint to that position. So instead of doing that, I thought it would be simpler to go to the municipal court.
Just go straight to court?
Since the judge is already there, and the court's already established, yeah.
Page 32. Item 84230A2, the last sentence. It seems like that we're talking about "Service shall be complete upon depositing the notice in the United States Postal Service" with a certified return mail. It seems odd to me that the point starts when you put it in the mail, which, who knows when that happened, versus when the receipt of certified mail is received back, or does that make sense?
No, I'm not sure I'm following you, I'm sorry.
Well...
The last sentence, the service part is what?
The timeframe starts when, when the letter's deposited in the mail, correct?
Mm-hmm.
How do we know when that was, or is?
There's a stamp.
Yeah, it's certified, they have to give you a stamp when you submit the letter. We defer to Miss Postal Service over here.
It is round dated, your certified mail slip is round dated with the date on it when it is mailed.
I feel so much better now, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Amanda.
Page 34. 958.2, or zero, 958.0. That says there is adopted. Does that whole sentence, does that whole paragraph make sense, the way it starts? It's like there, and I'm not, what does that mean?
It's an old-fashioned way to do it, it's adopting that statute by reference. So you're basically saying that statute applies here and adopting it in whole. I can tweak it a little bit. That's the way it's worded now, I didn't change it, I just changed the citation, so, but I can change it if you don't like it.
I didn't know what I meant, but I'm not an attorney.
It has the same effect.
Okay. Page 44. And this is more of a question maybe to Tony. Item B at the top, where it talks about the city shall enter one or more intergovernmental agreements which blah, 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 blah. But it, the last sentence says, "And provide full, accurate accounting with respect to said monies." Is, is that in fact happening? It's talking about the, the fire protection and EMS impact fees, which basically says that because of the intergovernmental agreement, I'm assuming that they're talking about that the fire department will provide us with a accurate accounting of where all those fees were spent. Is that happening?
I'll have to double-check with finance. I can do that, I can do that and get back to you.
And do we charge a fee for collecting those fees?
That's my knowledge.
Then number, number C reference is 4%. It collects as administrative fees, so if we're not collecting a fee, does number four apply? Or number C?
It says you shall be entitled to retain. If you choose not to, it's not a mandatory retention.
You should have the option there if it was needed for some reason.
Times get tough. I know we collect, for example, a fee from the county for the, the use tax, I believe that's 3%, but I'll double-check.
And then item B under 1542100, it looks like item B talks about a refund, is that right? That if they don't use those funds within eight years, that they get sent back to the city? And have we validated that, that has or has not happened?
They get returned back to the fee payer, so the original payer of the fee, the city doesn't pay the fee, so it's whoever paid the impact fee. But to answer your second question, I, I don't know whether that actually happens or not, or whether we keep track of that.
I'll check between finance and the fire department.
And then item number three, you make reference under 1542110, you make reference to date of the ordinance... to date of the ordinance codified in this chapter. Is that this ordinance or some other ordinance?
It would be the original ordinance, probably, that was... Well, no, it would be this one. I take that back. I'm sorry.
I'm glad you're here tonight.
And we're glad you're here.
Whatever. Mayor?
No.
Well, I just got questions. Sorry. On Page 71, I don't know who can clarify this, but Adam may be able to. I thought MSDS terminology was changed to SDS. Am I wrong, or is that...
It's Adam. We're still using the same model language, so we can check with him to see if that was changed.
Okay, that's just technicality. If you don't want me to read it, don't send it to me.
No, I read it. See, I marked it all up and everything.
I didn't say you did. I just said...
I knew you would do that.
Whatever.
Is there anyone else that would like to make comments? Ms. Smith?
I have one that Jim didn't mention.
Oh!
And it was my own one.
Sloppy work.
But...
I have a bottle that I can throw.
Mine is on Page 24, under 838.010, and it's D. And I noticed on our edited versions that we had crossed out this section of the sentence that said, "Or any portion of the right-of-way between the sidewalk and on-street parking," or a form of that. It's a little bit different, but that is in there. And I just want to make sure that council, that what has been included in here is our intention. So, we did have a lot of discussion also around this, of people who just kind of pull it and park, kind of off-road, and if we want to...
Yeah, so, it had that... It originally said, like, "And/or any portion of the right-of-way outside the travel portion of said right-of-way." And there was some consternation over what that really means. And so, that part was taken out, so it's just between the sidewalk and on-street parking. So, hopefully, that clarifies things.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that was our intention. Because we particularly had some discussion on that.
I think we're clear as we can be.
Because there are some cars that are parked there for a very long time, too, in those right-of-ways.
Is there a time restriction on that?
No.
Like, if you have out-of-town guests that are staying for the weekend, and they're parked in front of your house?
It's an immediate violation.
What was your question?
Well, like, my dad has a travel trailer, and so, when he comes to visit me, he parks in front of my house while he stays with me. And so, I wonder if maybe, like, a 72-hour, you know, if they're visiting somebody for the weekend.
Are you saying he's parking in the...
He is.
In the walkway, in the sidewalk?
Well, no. We don't have sidewalks in front of our house, so...
So, he's just parking on the street?
Off-street.
Off-street, yeah.
So, that wouldn't apply then.
Or he's parking, like, in your...
Technically, it's in the easement. But there's no sidewalk.
Is he parallel to your house, or is he like this?